Thank you. I'm a father of eight children attending middle school and also a twenty seven grad on the best student's list. And here tonight, we met before, really an opportunity to enhance the communication between the culture and the parent. I think this is a great opportunity to talk about it. On Tuesday, the twenty seventh of September, at approximately nine forty-four in the morning, we received emails from the district indicating that all sudden the high school dorms were locked down due to both law enforcement activity and the community following traffic incident. The message also indicated there was not a terrible place for students to stay. No other information is really provided. In an effort to promote instruction, not distract our son, my wife and I did not intend to reach him, but I did. Throughout the day, however, parents did contact them to find out if there was more information available. Online searches that we did regarding theft incidents in the area were also done to give you any information. We didn't know if there was a road rage incident, someone getting in a car with a weapon, or truck losing their explosives. We were in the dark. It wasn't until one thirty-four P M. that day that we received a second email. That email simply stated could have been so unfortunate this morning's matter is involved and district lockdown is now over. Just to be precise, our neighboring district, Parkland School, was closed because a student brought a firearm to school. Two days before that, a fifty-year-old was shot in the head. I would like the board to think for a moment what it was like for us parents to know that the schools were in lockdown for hours and to have the only communication that they wanted. What was on the court in case of that? Did they prevent a crime from occurring? They had their manager at the school and staff of his board. What did the students know? How was their instructional day impacted? However, social activities curtailed or otherwise impacted? Were they allowed to leave without the school permission? If not, were they told why? Were they allowed to leave the building for appointments or a urgent event? If so, how were they protected and not what were they told? So, we understand that the schools have to coordinate tremendous amount of information to ensure the safety of our kids, and we appreciate the effort that the schools take to ensure they are kept safe and alert and far. We also understand that the school is probably not looking to share anything about active activities. That's not the point. I can speak for many parents that I've spoken with. When I say that we're not so much concerned about the details of the incidents as much as we are about the safety and coping of the children before or after they're born. These are the parents who need to be kept much better informed in the moment about not only what the students are likely experiencing, but how the schools are responding, how the children are responding. The information received is not sufficient. It wasn't until later that day when I did call the district and I had a very good talk with someone there, and also called the middle school and spoke with Mr. Donnie Dooty, who was very helpful, that I learned that the students weren't told much at all. We also learned that many parents tried to communicate with their kids during the day, someone informing them that there was a lockdown. Imagine the kind of whisper down the lane and misinformation that could potentially ripple through the student body. Kids are not being told something to attend to by the school itself, but they're getting secondary information from the community. Furthermore, it should not be the students' responsibility to come home and tell us what happened in the school that day. This is placing an unnecessary mental and emotional burden on them. We need more information from the district. Like many communities across the country, Southern E I is in uncharted territory regarding escalation of bodies targeting students. We appreciate that often, you have to rely on law enforcement to provide information, and then the schools have to relay it to the district. It's quite possible you are in the dark as well. Please keep in mind that the students and the parents have to rely on all of you. In many things, we receive nothing self-inflicted, which is a response. So, in the spirit of cooperation of will, I'd like to call upon just the deep up of crisis response plan to include perhaps the following. One, development of a tiered response plan of what the district does in terms of severity of potential risks. I don't want to waste the details of that. I did print out the ALIS, as well as the threat assessment document, which I think is also really effective. But the I in ALIS is informed, and it really doesn't talk about the level of depth that the parents should expect to receive information about. I'm sure you'll come up with something better than these definitions, but this is a start. We'd like to have updates at regular intervals until the incident is resolved, so that parents can be kept aware. Three, a final summary emails of the parents that are using that lines of problem. What the students were told or not told? How their instructional day was impacted by the events? What activities were curtailed, canceled, or otherwise altered? How the missed score is to be addressed? How the student's mental health might be impacted from that day? Their counselor's idea? Or any event of distress? How this began?
Yes. Yeah. But I take it as a recording matter. You can just wrap up.
Sure, sure. And the last one was just cease placing a responsibility that this doesn't what happened on the children. Sometimes they come home and they know more than we do. Some days they go home and don't know anything, and we don't know what to tell them. So, it would just be really helpful if you part of the job a little bit more and you can just keep up the story there. There is a little bit of framework, but the content seems to be cut back. Thank you.
Hi there. I saw that the universal free breakfast program was on the agenda tonight, and that's great. I can see on the agenda that this will be implemented across all the district schools. So, thank you for clarifying that, because until then, some of us weren't sure if this was going to happen at some schools and not other schools. So, that was great. I expect that you've got administrators and staff who are digging into the logistics to make this happen. So, first, I want to say thank you for doing so. I came up to speak just because, as a parent, I wanted to let you know that I think that not only are there a lot of things that parents don't know, but there are even things that we don't know that we don't know. And so, either when you're discussing it tonight, or just in your communications to people later, I just wanted to provide some feedback of what we don't know, so that maybe that could be proactively included. We don't know what time these breakfasts are happening, to know if this is something that can still happen for students who arrive on the bus, or if the only way to access it is if you get driven to school before the normal bus arrivals. I hope that that would already be included, but I just wanted to put that out there that we don't know. If it is something that the only way you can access it is by arriving at school before the normal bus arrival time is, I would hope that we are thinking about how that really makes sure that everybody who needs the universal program is actually getting access to it. So, it's just a question of access at that point. I don't know if you've considered, like, grab-and-go bags, so that anybody who needs it can grab and go. I don't know if this becomes weird logistics for some teachers to basically have a morning snack time for some kids who have the breakfast there, but not others, if it's happening in the classroom rather than beforehand. And also, just kind of considering the fact that we want to make sure that we're normalizing the fact that some kids might be eating their meal at their breakfast at school, where some people won't be, and I hope that there won't be anything that makes that a stigma or any kind of anything gets read into it there. So, those are just kind of some of the things that, from an outsider's perspective, who doesn't see all the great work you're doing digging into that, is wondering about. So, I hope that gets communicated when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reinhardt. So, a few things. First, we are closely monitoring interest rate environments. As remember, at our last meeting, we spoke about whether we are going to take some money from the fund balance, or whether we take loans. Since that time, the interest rate environment has changed, and I think in our favor. We, Mr. Pepe, has reallocated some of our investments. We're now in some of them over four percent. And so, we're going to continue to monitor that and how rising interest rates might interact with our plans to either fund this through fund future projects through fund balance or through other means. I just want to alert the board that in upcoming, in our next meeting in October, we'll be looking at that in more detail, but we are keeping an eye on interest rate environments, which I think are breaking very much in our favor. I do want to thank also Dr. Trinkle, our principals and staff, for their district-wide training and crisis management effort today. We were practicing the Navigate system. Phones were going off everywhere as we were practicing district-wide notifications on lockdowns and reunification and all types of internal drills. I also want to reach out and acknowledge Mrs. Buckman for her work with her counselors and nurses this afternoon. They were working on a book group discussing warning signs for individuals and how we might intervene early to help both support individuals and also, more broadly, support the safety of others in our schools and in our community. So, I do want to acknowledge both Dr. Trinkle and Mrs. Buckman for their very fine work that went on today. I want to congratulate the entire school district, Southern High School District, being named number seventeen of five hundred school districts in Pennsylvania as Best Places to Teach by each magazine. I want to note, I think, that the primary reason that Southern High is a great place to teach is because of the talented and dynamic colleagues that you acquire when you come here. And a quick update on transportation. We have more drivers finally onboard. We now have as many drivers as we do routes. So, the only time that we will have disruptions is if at the last minute, someone calls in in the morning, and we have to scramble then to combine routes or run late. And as our transportation challenges slowly begin to stabilize, we expect the return of green slips sometime early next month, or at least mid-next month. Because as we've looked at this, and as I've been promising this for some time now, it made little sense to give a green slip for a student to get on a bus that will be running someplace else. But now that we have, you know, a better sense of the stability of the system, and we intend, we believe this is going to be getting better, we'll have the green slips coming back very soon. I also had the pleasure of meeting with our Homecoming Court recently. Collectively, they raised over forty-six thousand dollars for charity. I was struck by both their generosity and their insight. They, with their advisors, Mr. Rook and Mrs. Schiffer, are going to put their minds together to devise a process that will emphasize charity and expand meaningful opportunities for students to participate. Now, that had been a point of discussion, I do want to say that they are a very, very impressive group. I want to also note to the board, we're having a shortage of nurses, particularly when we have events and field trips. Mrs. Bachman and others have reached out to Biata Nurses to identify substitute nurses on a short-term basis. I'm going to sign that contract tomorrow and get it moving and bring it back for the board's approval later in the month, because, again, we have some kind of stop-gap issues that we think that will assist us in filling. And I think, Mrs. Reinhardt, that's it. We have Mr. Pepe and a few other items later on in the agenda, but that concludes my superintendent's report.
I just had a question, if it's okay, regarding your update. So, thank you for, I guess, there was, I appreciate the work that was done regarding the crisis management that you mentioned. Is there, was there any discussion, I guess, relevant to the comments that were made with respect to communication? You know, how that processes? I mean, I think everybody understands in the community, including myself, that you obviously don't want to give away certain information that could be hazardous, right, in terms of safety. So, I do agree that there was some, a lot of confusion, and sometimes getting some communication, depending on the degree of or nature of it, sometimes makes it worse. You know, like, you know something, but you don't know everything in your mind, and, you know, like, your mind goes in places, especially with current events, as they were stated, I think, earlier in the comments pretty well. The other concern I have is consistency, I guess, across the buildings, because I think, and I understand that you have to be different with respect to messaging based on the age group of the children, but I did want to voice that it was clearly different between, you know, for example, the middle school and the high school in terms of what was told to students and how, I guess, it was approached. I guess, in the high school, they stay in classrooms, and I think in the middle school they don't. And I think that what was conveyed to them is also a little bit different. And I think for some in the high school, I think it probably led to more stress than needed, you know, in this situation, given what it was in the end. So, I just, just throwing that out there as considerations. And I know you just obviously did the work on it, but I think that I did see a lot of, I heard a lot from parents too, not just, you know, one individual, but multiple that were worried.
Well, right. And what I'll tell you is that we've had extensive, like, it might be the wrong, like, an after-action review of the lockdown that we had that day. We think we did a number of things very well, and we think there are a number of things that could stand to be improved. So, if a similar incident were to happen tomorrow, we would be better at it than we were on the day that it did occur. And so, that really is an ongoing process for us to improve performance.
Right. There's always a learning curve, right? Like, you learn from experience, but...
And while I'll tell you, the time after, if it were to happen tomorrow, the time after that, we'd do it better still.
Yeah.
And so, I'm very open to the thing that we need to do things better. It was Mr. Brown? Yes, Mr. Brown. Am I saying it correctly? Right. Yes. Now, Mrs. Brown raised some very valid points, but I will also say that, in my experience, fully aligning messaging, as Mr. Brown might suggest, has its own set of challenges. The key is honesty, and we did put out, kids were never under a threat. Okay? And that is true, and we hold that to now. And we also were quick to say when the lockdown was concluded. Now, as it happened, there was a bit of a hidden run in town, and a person pulled in a car and left it there and left, right? And the person's interest was to get as far away from the school as possible, right, because of this instance? And what I would say is, and in my experience, the more information like that that's put into an email creates more angst, not less, creates more. And the issue that we face is that students are communicating with their parents and with each other. Information is coming from the inside, the outside, through social media, and that exacerbates the thing. Parents, you know, there is no threat. We're in a lockdown. Parents understandably want to call the school, and then they're reaching out to their child, and then that dynamic actually creates disruption inside buildings, because, you know, what's going, some of our kids didn't even know they were in a lockdown until their parents communicated with them. And again, I'm not blaming the parents. That's just how it goes. So, while I certainly respect and will consider the suggestions that Mr. Brown makes, I don't know that I would fully be prepared at this moment to align with a more detailed approach, because that would, I think, perhaps create the problems that we would like to try to avoid.
So, I mean, I understand sometimes less is more, right? So, I think part of, one thing I did notice is, you know, so we had initial communication really early on, which was great, and then I think there was a bit of a lag, right? Like, because it persisted, I guess, for some time. And I think that large lag time between the two notifications led to issues as well. And I am curious, what were students told in the high school?
Well, and as far as we get back to the specifics of what was or wasn't done, and we've been working on that, but, you know, but we need to have a consistent message, but, you know, our thought was that instruction would not have been impacted, that people would just go about their day.
Well, they were, they had to stay in the same classroom.
And so, those are things that we would...
They couldn't leave. They stayed in the same period.
And so, those are things that we would obviously want to work, but...
The only reason, the one thing that they were told that did kind of concern me, like, one part of it was, this is not a drill, which it's not, but at the same time, it implies a higher level of worry and concern. So, just throwing it out there, and I respect that view.
And all those things that we have, those are the types of things that we look for that feedback, and we learn from it for sure.
The other side of that coin is, I was watching Facebook that morning, and when you don't give any information, parents start to snowball. And at one point, I saw that there was some man who sped past all of the cars in the drop-off line and crashed into something at the I S. and then fled, and it snowballed from there. And then you've got parents panicking, because they think that that's, that that's what happened, and that's not really what happened, and you have that problem then too.
Right. And while that is a problem, keeping up with social media with respect to announcements is also a very serious and difficult challenge.
Parents panicking at home, because that's what they're reading. We're not telling them anything, so that's where they're getting their...
Right. And I'm not trying to, but the point, we were very clear, said there is no threat to our kids, and that is where the district stands on the issue. And if parents are saying, well, if there was a threat, and we didn't tell people, or we, you know, weren't accurate in our response, then, but for us to say, there is no threat, we are in a lockdown, and then to adjust our response because of what's happening on social media would create, you know, a challenge, and ultimately, I think, in the end, not achieve what it is we would try to achieve, which is keeping people informed and appropriately concerned over the level of incident that is taking place. And in this case, while we were in a lockdown, it was not an incident that we thought required anything more than saying there's no threat, we're in, we're in lockdown.
Dr. Mann, I appreciate that. I think there was something that Mr. Brown said that I think we certainly could learn from is some type of continuous update, along with what Dr. Serene said. I think, you know, every hour or something, because this went on a number of hours. So, even something as simple as, you know, we're still in a lockdown, there's still, there continues to be no threat to the students, there's police activities, you know, something with regular updates, and I would say, at minimum, I believe those updates should likely be every hour in a situation like that in the future, because then that can mitigate some of this whisper down the lane that occurs.
And that's fair. Our approach, at least our thinking, right or wrong, was there will be no update until there actually is an update. So, the circumstance had not changed, and as soon as there was a change in circumstances from the original announcement, we got it out promptly. But we decided, for right or wrong, to say, you know, we're not going to repeat when there really is no change in status, and then once there was a change in status, that was when we put out the announcement. Rather or wrongly, that was the rationale behind it.
Yeah, I think the other thing, I think it's important that the district be able to focus on the task at hand, and while it's important to inform the public as you can, you know, it can be its own task then to have, you know, there's only so many administrators, and depending on what the response is, I can remember a few years back, we were all over at the sales at one point. That was a rather arduous task. They had to get all the students over there, and I'm in my head thinking, okay, then someone somehow has tasked to give real-time updates to the community. You know, I think, the other thing I think the community needs to be aware of, you know, I work closely with these things in my job for the county, and I've been involved in almost every major response over the last number of years. And people should be aware that the law doesn't always allow law enforcement to share information with the school district. People might assume that the school district is somehow just wired into local law enforcement and is getting an update on information in real time somehow, but there's actually statutes that, Criminal Records Act, that doesn't allow, say, someone like Officer McLaughlin or R S R Os even to provide sensitive information to the district, depending what that is. And so, the assumption is that somehow, you know, Dr. Mann is wired into, you know, upper sock and police department to know exactly in real time what is happening with them. They're reliant on, often, and I think we have a very good relationship with our local law enforcement, but the reality is, law, local law enforcement can't share everything that's happening in real time with non-law enforcement agencies, which the school district is not a law enforcement agency. So, it doesn't have all the information that law enforcement has either. So, I think the expectation perhaps, or an education for our community is to know that the school district may not be fully aware of everything that's, and especially in this case, where if you have a law enforcement response that is not specific to the district, in this case, it was a traffic incident that was happening, well, that really has nothing to do with the school district, other than it happens to be happening near the district and required us to go into lockdown. So, there wouldn't really be a lot of exceptions for upper sock and to be providing the school district with law enforcement information about what's going on, other than to say we think there's a threat in the area. So, there's a lot of things that can go into any one response. Certainly understand people's concerns, a number of us here on the board have people that were impacted, kids at that school as well. I was generally satisfied with the speed by which we were provided some initial information. And certainly, I think, I think Dr. Mann's point, which is, until you know something more, I'm not sure how helpful it is to put out that, I think, to say as best he could that there was no threat to the children. I think the people in the community need to try to accept that the district is telling them the truth, that they've evaluated it, and if they say there's no threat to the kids, then frankly, I do think, and I'm not blaming the parents, but the attempt to try to gather information on their own is if that's not necessarily true, then causes a large amount of information in the space that may or may not be helpful. So, on the whole, I was relatively happy with how the response came, given, they can always be better. I'm glad to hear there's a hot wash on it, and I suspect, you know, we learned some lessons, and luckily, this was a rather minor incident on the scale of things. But I do want to, I do think it's important that the community understand that oftentimes the school district will not know completely what is happening on the ground in real time, at least a full story. And so, they have to themselves be careful about trying to relay a picture of which they don't have a full picture yet. I mean, until they have a full picture, it can be dangerous to try to sort of guess at or provide information out that isn't. So, sometimes I think putting out, there's no danger, that's what the police told us, and then waiting for the fuller picture for them to come out. And I think, I just think it's helpful for the community to understand that we don't have, even with an S R O., you do not have an exchange of information, a full information between law enforcement and the school district. That's not, that's actually not the way it works. And so, for future events, especially ones of greater urgency and maybe higher concern, you probably even have less information in the near term, and it often isn't until later that you get a little better idea of what happened. So, I just think for our community members to be aware of that, and perhaps to have, just understand that expectation that the school district may not always have the full picture as it's happening either.
I mean, I think that's a good point. I don't think that it's context or knowledge so much with respect to the details of the incident itself. I think that was on point with respect to knowing that there was local activity, you know, and there was no threat. I think that was well-established. But I think having some degree of reassurance within that longer period of time, you know, I don't know that I would need every hour, like Dr. Reis said, but I think that's better than the six hours. You know, I think that something in between would be reasonable, because, you know, it is a larger burden, and I understand that. And I think probably what was, I think, somewhat lacking maybe is, you know, parents don't exactly know what's happening with their children. I don't think it's so much that you're worried about what's, I think we get that there's no threat persisting for that extended period of time that's going to be significant, logically speaking, but I think it's knowing, oh, what class is she in? You know, are he in? What, you know, are they still in? Because there was, there were differences between how it was handled, and I don't know which one's better, you know, between middle school and high school. So, I think, no, my kid's still in this class, and there's still, there's not too much disruption on their end. I think that, and maybe you don't need to do that every time, but just have a standard operating procedure, and then kids know about it, and your, the parents know about it, so there's no questions during an actual event that would bog you down, you know, with respect to phone calls, just a suggestion.
Thank you, everybody, for your suggestions. Moving on, Mr. Pepe.
Thank you, Madam President. I have an update tonight on the high school mechanical upgrades. That's a project that we had been looking at for a couple of months now, and that's going to be covered mostly by the ARP-ESR funds, and if there's any balance on that project, we're going to look at either covering that at a capital reserve or at the facilities' bank note that's under consideration. We'll be talking more about that at the next meeting. Basically, the overview from E I Associates was the scope of work, and that is related to replacement of two roof-mounted chillers at the high school. Presently, the utility of the equipment is past its useful life expectancy, well past their going-on past thirty years at this point. The refrigerant used is antiquated refrigerant type that's obsolete and no longer manufactured. One of the compressors on the chillers actually already failed. The roof shows evidence of oil leaks from the equipment. The system has piping outdoors in certain areas where there is no freeze protection in the form of glycol in the piping, therefore, it must be drained down at the end of every fall in preparation for the winter. That's all going to be remediated moving forward with the proposed work to provide two new chillers with the glycol circulating pumps in the V F Ds, which is variable frequency drives, that's for the motors with electrical content. Also, to provide four new chillers that are water-circulating pumps. And also in addition to the base bid for the big equipment that's up there, there's going to be two alternates. The alternates will be structured to take care of the media center suite at the high school. And the second alternate would be the administrative offices, guidance offices and boardroom. Uh, none of these areas are working properly. That's why sometimes we're freezing in here and/or other times it's very hot. Um, all of the proposals include demolition, the proposed work with the air handling units. And the, uh, total cost for the professional service is 146,700. That will be on the regular meeting agenda for approval at the end of the month. And that's broken down over three phases, detailed design and documentation, bidding and construction administration. Um, the facilities committee has been meeting on this topic and will be meeting with, uh, EI Associates engineers next Tuesday for a breakdown of the actual, uh, estimate for the work that's going to get bid out and what's all involved with the project. So they've been following that closely. Any questions on that? Okay, uh, the next, so let's see, that's under support service. I'm going to roll right into budget and finance. Under budget and finance for discussion, uh, Act 57 of 2022. It's a relatively new act that was signed into law on July 11th, 2022. And basically what it does is it provides, as it stated, it provides, uh, the ability for anyone who has not been, not received their actual bill, not to be considered late and have to pay late charges on top of what's actually due. So for school districts, the deadline to adopt the resolution is actually January 7th of 2023, because we operate on fiscal year. So this will be approved and it will go into effect in July of 2023, as that is the first actual bill that we're putting forward. So in essence, it's simply a waiver of additional charges for late payments of real estate taxes in certain circumstances. And the certain circumstance is if somebody did not receive their actual tax bill in the mail. So is there any questions on that?
So are there, are there any checks and balances in place there? Like, uh, uh, cause then wouldn't everybody who's late just say, I didn't get my bill?
It's only for people that just purchased a home, not for a regular.
Okay.
That's why certain circumstances. So in other words, if you've just purchased and you've gone through the closing and you don't receive the bill and, you know, you're still going to have to pay the tax anyway. So it's just a matter of, that's the way the law was put down. It's for municipalities, school districts, anybody who pays taxes.
Are you saying we have to pass it? The state is it?
Correct.
Or we don't have a choice?
Correct. And any other questions? Okay, so all districts are going to be doing that, all municipalities are also doing that. And I've shared that with our tax collectors already, because they, they actually had it before we did. Cause their association was looking at it. So now, uh, universal free breakfast program, uh, some of the questions that Ms. Dolan had expressed tonight are actually in the report. So I appreciate that, you know, people are looking at that as a really good project. First, I'd like to thank Greg Martin for his work on that and Dr. Trinkle and building principals who all got together to work out the logistics. Um, the resolution after it's approved will go into effect on Monday, October 17th. That's why it's on for action tonight. Uh, we looked at site schedules, starting with the elementary. The breakfast time will be between 8:40 and 9:10, uh, bus drop offs between 8:40 and 9:00 AM. Uh, first bell is not until 9:15, so that'll allow for five minutes of movement within the corridors for students. And it'll give them a 30 minute block of time for the breakfast. Uh, the IAS breakfast will be from 8:35 to 9:10. That's a 35 minute block for them. Uh, bus drop offs between 8:35 and 9:05. And as the superintendent talked about tonight, uh, bus drop offs getting much smoother. So buses are coming in on time as opposed to running late, which will give more opportunity and time for students. And principals understand and are working with the schedule as well. Middle school and high school, the breakfast portion is a shorter timeframe. It's 7:15 to 7:30, first bell is 7:35, even though it's less time with the older students, we feel it's achievable. There's an actual breakfast schedule that's going to go out, so the parents will be able to sign online to see what is available on what particular day. And there's actual, uh, menus that consist of everything from the choice of fresh fruit each day and the choice of milk each day. And then they change out what the actual, uh, item is for that particular day. So it was very well thought through and we're very excited that we're going to be able to offer it universally. The cost associated with this program, typically we would get reimbursed for free and reduced students. Um, the state has rolled out the program stating that they will reimburse the district for any portion of students who do not qualify for free and reduced. Therefore, there's no cost to the district to run the program, other than some additional time that's, uh, necessary to run it at each of the buildings. And that is also on the agenda for approval. And that's simply based on what's needed in each particular school and it's on a rotating basis. So everyone that you see on the resolution will not all be working at the same time.
And that part is not covered by the grant then, you said?
Correct.
Okay.
That, that, that'll come out of the operational costs.
Yeah, where's the itemized amount?
We do not know at this time because we're not sure how, put it this way, if every student that's eligible takes part, it'll pay for itself. It'll be covered based on the reimbursements.
I was thinking to the additional staff.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because the best, the best scenario here is everyone avails themselves to the free program.
So this is similar to what we had during COVID with respect to the lunches, right? The free lunches, we wanted the kids to
Yep.
Enjoy their lunches so we can
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Lou, in regards to the students making it known if they want breakfast or don't want breakfast, is there a process in place to do that? Because I'm envisioning there's going to be a lot of wasted food with this.
I, I believe what's going to happen is what happened just like with COVID. They're going to be prepped and they'll start to look at, you know, what, whatever parents have already gone on and, and stated, yes, they're going to take the, the breakfast. They're going to have to have breakfast available for any students that didn't say ahead of time, yes, I want this. But usually as they go through the first couple of days, they'll start to adjust their counts so that they're not throwing away a lot of food. But, uh, and some of the, some of the food items can also go back, you know, stay refrigerated and have more shelf life than the one day. But I think they're going to make adjustments as necessary as they see the participation levels go up or down.
Okay.
So will we get, sorry, will, will we get emails like we did last time then to sign up? Like, like how the lunch program worked during COVID? Like she's, well, will we get those emails every week? Like time to sign up for breakfast if you want them?
According to Mr. Martin, yes.
It's okay. And just to clarify, this is a program that's being done because there is currently money from the state and the federal level. It's not something that we would continue the fund if those monies went away.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's why you also require, we require board resolution.
I was just curious, the note talks about breakfast pricing of $1.75 at the elementary and intermediate levels and $2 at the secondary level for additional meals. Is that if I want two breakfasts or is that, like, I don't understand what that means.
It's 100% correct.
Okay.
If one's not enough for free and you want another one, then you're going to have to pay.
Okay. Yeah, I was about to say, I can probably imagine a few, a few people taking, okay. Great.
And that's all I have, Madam President.
I'm sorry, just one more, I'm follow up on that. The question, uh, earlier had talked about, do we believe the timing of this would, would allow for, you know, like kids getting off the bus or if they're driving here, they would? Is it, is the anticipation, you can get walked down to the cafeteria and, and sort of pick up a bag or even potentially eat there? Or is that, how would we have the time to do that?
And I think that's why we waited until October 17th and not run the program on October 1st. Because that was a lot of the discussions that, uh, Mr. Martin and, uh, Dr. Trinkle were having with the building principals to ensure the schedule would actually allow this to work. So it's like anything else, in the beginning, it'll probably take a little more adjusting to figure it out. And then as everybody gets used to the program, and remember it's not mandatory. So you may not have, even if it's available, you may have a number of students that choose not to participate. And then as they see other, you know, students using it, they may say, you know what, I'm going to go get my free breakfast too.
I have, we'll say that, I'm, I'm a little leery of the high school only getting 15 minutes for their breakfast. Um, will there be especially like the first week or two, some leeway there? Are we going to be a little flexible on that until? And maybe if we discover that it, they need more time, that we can add more time?
Yeah, I'm pretty, pretty confident our principal shaking his head in the back at the high school says yes.
Yeah, cause some of them, those buses get in a little bit later, even if they're on time, so I, I know.
Right.
Yeah, I figured, you'll see.
So, uh, motion, so moved. Okay, so we need a motion.
Second.
Standing on the agenda for 5D, uh, one.
Second.
Any other comments or questions, folks? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Okay. We should approve reversal for breakfast and the additional cafeteria staff is approved. Mr. Pigeon.
We only have, sorry. We only have one item for HR tonight, and that is the separation agreement, as you can see.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Pigeon? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? The separation agreement is approved.
I have a human resources question before we move on to new business, if that's okay. Um, Mr. Pigeon, we just approved a couple dozen substitutes when, when we're the last like month or so, right?
Correct.
Um, what is the, I, I'm asking because I have two high school kids at home and between the two of them, they were uprooted and in either the auditorium or the library for three of their classes in one day.
Was that Friday?
Yeah. So I'm just curious, like, are people not, are, like, out of all those people that we've approved, are people just not picking up the jobs or?
In, in all honesty, on Friday, we had the, the most subs we've had since I've been here, um, taking jobs. So no, they are working, they were just in, in excess absences. Um, during the course of the week, I ran, and I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I believe we were at 72% fill rate all of last week. If I took Friday out, we're about an 83 or an 84%. So we were good during the week. Friday was a rough day.
So in, in general, we are covering every day, but that was just a weird day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I root for, for rain on Fridays during the day, not, not in the evening. I don't want to impact any of these sports.
And not to belabor the point, but I'm assuming there are other times. It seems that unfortunately we aren't able to cover and students are in auditoriums with other classes though. Cause I, I know it's not just a one time thing.
Uh, I, I don't
I know we try to avoid it, but I just, you know, I, I do want to kind of echo that.
I know at our elementary levels, we are at really close to 100% fill rate for our teachers. Our, the intermediate schools probably at 92%. The middle school was up around 80% and the high school was down.
Yeah.
Again, especially Friday, but last week we had more subs going to the high school than we've had in the past. So we are pushing and, and encouraging individuals to, um, sub with us and sub at the high school. Because that's typically where we have the most absence.
How does it work? I mean, in terms of the turnaround time, do you have like a service that supplies and you notify it? Like, cause you know, if it's like a last minute call out, um, I'm assuming
Those are the hard ones to fill.
Right.
So if you have, you know, the more time we have to fill an absence, the, the better chance we have of filling it.
Okay.
But we don't have service, we have what's called the frontline system, which our staff goes in, our teachers, our IAs, everybody goes in and puts in their absence. And then the sub can go in and pick up the absences they're qualified for.
And do they get just like, you have a pool of subs that gets notified, they like email notifications?
They get emails, they get phone calls, the, the system calls them. Um, they can actually set the parameters of when they want to be called and what building have, you know, being called for. And then I go in and change it to all buildings again, because I, I'm trying to get people to go to the secondary schools.
Okay.
We have some new business, um, certainly high library and library resource.
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought I would put these on because, uh, these issues are likely to come before the board. So I thought that maybe there, we would take the opportunity, uh, to, uh, offer the board opportunity to discuss, um, these issues among themselves. Um, in, uh, last week, uh, the, uh, Southern High Public Library put out an announcement to the community uh, that spoke about, uh, some of the issues that it's facing, some of its potential responses. Uh, in that context, um, the district has in the past, uh, made a substantial donation to the library. Uh, it's likely that that will be something that the board would consider. And so I, I thought it important perhaps to list that as a topic of new business to see if any board members um, had insight or discussion as to how we might proceed, if at all, on, on that topic.
My, my thought there was, um, I know the library reached out to the entire board last week asking for a meeting. And I think that we should take them up on that and maybe wait to discuss the matters pertaining to the library until we've talked to them ourselves. My thought.
Any other thoughts or comments?
We have a representative from our board who sits on the, the library board, is that right? Could we, could we schedule some regular updates for the, for the public to hear in that regard? So I don't believe since my tenure here that, that individual has presented anything to the board.
And in our last meeting with the library, um, can you use your mic?
So do you mean like in public or, cause you know, we get email updates, right? So from the board.
Yeah, and I think it's important for the public to hear what
No, I'm, I'm not questioning that, I'm just asking for clarification.
Especially since there's obviously issues going on that we're to talk about. We do have a representative who, who
No, I'm not arguing with that, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be, uh, it's really be helpful to be updated. It doesn't seem like a, a small thing here that's going on. I have to say, you know, I don't fully, I suspect there's a lot of, um, I mean, I get what's trying to happen, but I, from what I'm, just a little bit, I'm kind of picking up. But it sounds like there's a little bit more to the story, uh, not in a ferrously necessarily, but clearly I don't know what the spat is over in, in, uh, North Hampton County, uh, in, in Lower Salken. And then I suspect there's by some kind of long, uh, going feud, I, I guess between, I, there must be some background on this that I, at least I'm not familiar with. Um, I'd be interested to, you know, maybe know a little bit more about that. And then obviously that's impacting this desire. Um, and then it's interesting that it looks like locally, uh, the email that we received on an update from, um, I'm not sure how to pronounce his last name, I guess Mr. Ernst, uh, who's the, uh, president of the board of directors was, I think, helpful in providing uh, us a, uh, and I don't know if this is a part of the minutes or will be, or has been provided to the, uh, the, the community. But it's at least part of our, it was emailed to us and it's here tonight for us to review as the board. Um, I did have, um, and, and so it seems as if our, our local municipalities, my reading of this email is that it sounded like they, they felt that the school board was giving pressure to, to, um, to do one thing potentially with this. And then evidently, oh, that was the way I read, uh, these circumstances, along with additional pressure from the Southern Lee High School District to accept it or risk cuts to its funding. Uh, was a, was a comment that, uh, I was trying to understand better. I'm not, I don't recall, I don't recall that. Um, and then also that, um, that Lower Milford and, and Upper Salken had, had sort of their own, uh, uh, they're indicating that they, they also provided threats that they might cut funding. So there, there appeared to be a statement here that a number of the funding sources of the local municipalities or tax authorities of the school district is one is providing pressure to the school, to the library to do one thing or another with this particular issue. Um, I'm not sure if that's fully accurate or, you know, exactly what that, I'd be interested to know what it means. The most concerning thing to me about this update though, um, which I thought was kind of a little out there to me, uh, was that the, the board itself in the last paragraph talks about that, uh, and they kind of, it, they kind of, it's like the way Trump always says, I hear, right? Or did, it's, you know, it starts the paragraph with, it has come to our attention that there is a concern about the composition of the board. I, I don't know what that exactly means. I mean, but the fact that it's in here, I suspect is coming from the library itself. And they talk about changing the composition of the, of the potential voting members, uh, to basically, I would suspect, maybe they exclude Cooper'sburg or Lower Milford, and I don't know if that's because they don't like what Lower And I don't know if that's because they don't like what Lower Milford and Coopersburg has to say, I don't know. I would suspect that might be the case, but either way, that was a little shocking to me to read. And I'm not sure how the board of directors, which is made up of, I expect some voting directors from those municipalities, is kind of putting that out there. I thought that was all kind of bizarre. So I have a, I would like an update to, to know what, what's sort of going on there. I also wouldn't mind an update maybe from, from those municipalities, you know, it's always hard to ask another municipality to come here and give us an update, but I'd be curious to know some of these other, it just seems like there's a lot of people that have some, yeah, thoughts about it.
So maybe, I think I agree with you. Let's do the meeting, let's have a meeting first and get it formed so that we can have a discussion instead of.
Well, I mean, to Jeff's first point, sorry, Bill, go.
That's okay. One, I think the board composition, there was a question when we were discussing this about the money equaling the representation, and it may not have been equitable in terms of a clear alignment there. The representative from the library, I believe, is out in the audience this evening, Mrs. Parsons is here. So we could certainly have, give her some time to speak to any of the questions. And I do believe that if we were to have a meeting, I don't think it's protected, it should probably be a public meeting. And perhaps those other entities could be invited from Lower Milford and Coopersburg and Upper Salkin Township and so on.
I mean, I, I think, you know, one question that you had mentioned with respect to, I guess earlier in the update, with respect to potential cuts in funding. I mean, I, I think that it was brought up, I believe, by Dr. Wayack, I think, during budget considerations, just throwing it out there. I think you were asking about the funding amount specifically, and it seemed to imply that potentially you were considering.
I don't know that I had any implication, I wouldn't.
I'm just saying that's maybe, that's why it's in there.
But that's not a fair representation. A question does not necessarily imply.
I didn't say that that was a definite, I said perhaps that was.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, that statement, that's all.
I understand what you're trying to say when you're all trying to talk at once. Dr. Sreen, you finish your point, then Dr. Wayack and then Dr. Demick.
Oh, I, I just was trying to clarify, I guess, help with Mr. Demick's question. I didn't say that that was true. I think that, that's the way it's worded in here, implying that there was a threat to funding. And I was just trying to indicate what I thought was maybe the context. I didn't say that you said you were going to cut funding, just so we're clear. Okay.
Yes, no, thanks for clarifying that. I just, I think I believe I just questioned during our budgeting process, given that we were operating, I believe, in the $1.5 million deficit, just questioning, you know, I think a 70, 72,000, 67,000, somewhere around that, is it? 71, thank you. $71,400 that the school district contributes directly to a local library that also receives taxpayer dollars. So I just, I certainly question that in, you know, in lieu of our, our need to balance a budget.
New chair, just for clarification, at the time we approved the budget.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
It's like Verizon. At the time we approved the budget, the line item that was in the budget was $71,400. There wasn't consensus at that time as to whether or not that was going to be fully funded. And the recommendation that we made was that we approved the budget and that the line item would allow the board the opportunity for further discussion and ultimate decision with respect to the funding for 2223. So it's typically broken up over four payments throughout the year of about 17,000 and change. We have not made the first payment, the first payment I believe should be around this time, September, October. And there's one in the December, January timeframe, and then I think March, April, and then the end of the year. So that's, that's what it was. And it was about $656,000 funded over the last 10 years. Because I believe it, when I look back at the history, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to $61,000 a year, and it had come up slightly to where it was 71,400. So that's just a little bit of backup.
Could I just ask a quick clarification, in lieu of that, it's a donation, is that right? Do we get an invoice or how does that work?
No, what happens is if we make the payment, we get a, we get an invoice from the library and then we would issue the payment. So it's, it has been historically built into the budget. Is it, is it required by law? No, that was one of the other discussions.
Right. And we've made the commitment all along that until we have affirmative approval from the board, we are not going to make the payment. And in talking to Mrs. Reinartz, perhaps if we could secure our friends from the library, we have the work session in November, so maybe the first part of the work session, as long as we may need to consume, could be devoted to this issue. If that's okay.
Do you mean with the members from the library board, like kind of a little back and forth with us?
I would say we can invite them and we'll put it on the agenda as an open discussion in the public. And if they're able to join us, then I think that would be, you know, perhaps be able to check the box that I think the board is correctly saying we should, we should look into.
So that would be in lieu of the Zoom session they've requested privately. We would do this as a public meeting.
Are there, and I, I agree that I also think that this should be public, but I don't know if any of the items that the library would want to discuss with us are items that are executive type items or, do you know what I'm saying? Like maybe there are things that they can't talk about publicly that they wanted to discuss with us. I'm not, I don't know that they are, I'm just throwing that out there. Maybe we should check with them before we do that.
The only pertinent discussion, the only pertinent discussion for this board is the funding. Because, you know, there was discussion about the makeup, but they're fully autonomous. So it's a seven, seven-member board, four from Upper Salkin, one Coopersburg, one Lower Milford, and one representative from Southern Lee High School District. But the only real discussion that's valid for us to weigh in on is whether or not the board's going to continue to fund and whether or not the board's going to continue to fund at the same level.
Yeah, but it may be though, that in light of the fact that this board does have a representative, the board may wish to weigh in, in perhaps providing instruction to our representative regarding issues that are not related to funding. And while the, our appointee is independent, certainly the board, as the board's appointee, would have the opportunity to express its desire to the individual that appointed, should it want to weigh in on issues beyond the finance.
So are we asking the library board to make a presentation to this board then in November, and then we're going to have a discussion? Is that how it's going to work?
Well, I, I think that the board has, the library board has requested opportunity to communicate with us.
Okay.
I would reach out to them, I don't mean to speak of them in the third person as you're sitting here in front of us tonight. And we would see if we could arrange that date and develop a forum and a process that would make good sense for all involved.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you. And then the second item I listed under new business is library resources. And the board is well aware that we had a recent complaint regarding a book that was thought to be contained in our library. Upon investigation, we found that the, that the book itself is not present in any of our libraries, but it is accessible to our high school students by virtue of the fact that we participate in an online electronic service that is beyond our control. While we are subscribers to it, the actual content in this service is beyond our control. We are currently reviewing the book itself. We've reached out to the intermediate unit who manages this electronic consortium, and we're trying to gather more information to better understand how this consortium works, how books are restricted within the consortium, how determinations are made of what is and what is not age-appropriate. And I thought I would take this occasion to, number one, you know, describe to the board in public the issue itself, and also to offer the board the opportunity to talk about a process in place or the established, the potential establishment of processes that would help us address this type of issue, which likely will occur in the future. At this point, absent a formal review process, the, essentially all complaints are handled or resolved by the superintendent. And, you know, that's as good as far as it goes, but that's a very narrow focus that may or may not represent the full thought of the board or a broad deliberative process in place. And so with respect to, to books, it's a very big thing to ban or deny access to a book, but it's also a very big thing to have in the hands of one of our students, a book that is inappropriate for the age level. And so those are the types of things that we are trying to, trying to work through. And again, it's an occasion for perhaps conversation. Some districts have an elaborate process in place with committees that may or may not be necessary. I, I think there is value in identifying, to equate it to movies where you have a G, a PG, a PG 13, and an R, where for instance, under 17 would not be admitted. And ideally have an external rating that would identify appropriateness of a book, and then we would then defer that external rating to what we would have allowed in the online, recognizing that we may disagree on whether it is appropriate or inappropriate rate, rating, but given the fact that there are thousands of books, and for us to kind of review them individually is, you know, quite a challenge, as would be described in a lengthy process that I, I sent out to the board. So again, that's just the backdrop of the information. We're doing our best to work through this, and I thought, again, it'd be appropriate for the board to, to weigh in or offer thoughts on how best to process these types of concerns.
Dr. Wayack, I just had a question. You had said that it's, the content is beyond our control, but I believe that a previous book was brought to the board's attention, brought to your attention. And apparently it sounds like we were pretty quickly able to turn off access to that particular book. Can you just inform the public what, what is our access? I would hope that we wouldn't be part of this consortium if it was completely beyond our control, but could you just let us know, is it as easy as just, you know, clicking a couple buttons and not allowing access to that particular book? Or do we have to go through their process? Are we waiting on the CLIU's process? Do they meet, you know, once every couple months? Could you just, you know, inform the public?
Those are all, all excellent questions. So I'll get to the most critical one first, that we do not have the ability to adjust access, to, to, to remove access from, of a book. So we, we cannot here remove, there is a book in question. We cannot remove the book in question that is beyond the scope of our ability here. There is a process that the intermediate unit has in place. We have two members of our district that participate on a committee at the, and the committee will review books. It is my understanding, and this was prior, just prior to my arrival here, that the previous book that was removed, was removed because it was misplaced. In other words, the, the rating of the book was inconsistent with how it was listed in the system, and therefore the intermediate unit and their technical people in association with this company that runs this service pulled it off. All right. We're asking the very same question of this book, right? Because it's, I think it's an obvious issue that if the book is inappropriately rated and is in the wrong category, then that just could be fixed and, you know, that's the end of the discussion. The more challenging question is if upon review, this consortium and this company say that this book is appropriate for these grade levels, let's just say high school, then we're left with, do we ascribe to that point of view on any particular topic? Or do we have an independent process where we would review the categorization of a book by these external agencies? And, and again, on one hand, and even if we were to come to a different decision than the rating agency, we could not then say we're removing this book, we can remove from our libraries, but we couldn't remove it from this system that many, many students across, I think the country actually have access to.
I would, I heard, I was under the understanding that you could actually hide the book, so our school district could actually just hide the book. It would still stay in the consortium, but we could actually just hide it so it wasn't viewable to our district?
And those are the questions we're trying to have answered, but our initial information that we have received is that we are not able to do such a thing. That that book is there and if we're part of this, our students have access to it.
What bothered me the most, I think, about, well, the, the book itself and then the, the fact that if you look, if you look up another graphic novel, novel, like a Big Nate or a Diary of a Wimpy Kid book, that it shows up as a suggestion, that that sounds like it could very easily fall into younger hands that maybe it, well, not maybe that it should not be.
Sure.
So that would all, that's also a very big concern of mine that it's showing up as, hey, here's what you read next to people that are looking up Diary of a Wimpy Kid.
And it is, and we, we tested this out today. We're, we're pretty sure that a student who is in, say, middle school cannot access this book because it is, you know, we, we had people try today, they, they could not do it, they did some sample logins, and then at the high school level, the person was able. Now, all of this, we're working with the consortium at the IU to better understand. So please take what I'm talking as, as preliminary as we try to better understand this process. We have some very good people who are trying to, you know, run this down, but our current understanding is that we cannot hide a book or remove it, but the book in question cannot be accessed by anyone lower than ninth grade.
Do they have a process at the IU for filing a complaint or a concern?
They do.
And have other districts with regard to this book filed a similar complaint or concern?
I just had a question, does a consortium, I mean, clearly there's a grade level specific access built in, right? So for Sora, so is there any other, you know, you mentioned some external rating systems, like is that at all incorporated into, like if I were to pull up a book, would a rating pop up at all? For example, that could be used as a filter, for example, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I believe so.
That would require parental consent, for example.
I believe so, Dr. Sreen, for instance, there is adult, there's young adult.
Okay.
There's juvenile, and, and there's associated grade levels with those categorizations.
So it's kind of built in in the background, so to speak?
It is built in in the background. And our question is, is this book appropriately categorized?
Right, okay.
And if it, if it's not appropriately categorized, then it strikes me as a very easy decision for the consortium to make. If they believe that it is appropriately categorized with respect to grade or age, then that kind of puts it back on us. We can certainly engage the, which we will, engage the representatives of this consortium in a conversation about this topic, but in the end, the actual final determination is beyond our control.
Can the consortium make a complaint themselves to the rating systems or whoever those folks are?
Yeah, I, I do, I think it's, I think they can.
And who, who does rate these books? I'm just trying to understand the process.
And that's, we are trying to understand that process.
Okay.
And, and, and one of our discussions was that, you know, with, with, with reading, with the movies, it's very consistent across the theaters, right? But we're, our initial look into this is that there may not be consistency across the rating scales. And so what rating system are they using? Are they getting that? For instance, they had a problem with their last, with the book that, the prior book, where they acknowledged this was misplaced. And so, you know, it's, we can control what's in our library. It happens that this is, was not in our library, didn't have to be removed, but it was not there. And so now we're trying to better understand how this whole thing works and how we can, you know, come back with a full report.
I just would ask that, yeah, if you could bring back more information. It sounds like we all want more information. It's.
Just got to follow up on that, that would be great. Okay. Do we have any other new business to discuss?
I just have another question. It was brought to our, the board's attention through a couple of emails regarding students of the opposite biological sex using, you know, a specific bathroom. Could you just walk through for the public's knowledge what the process is there and if there is any underlying policy or anything?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Wayack, for the question. That has come up a number of times, and I'm very happy to have the opportunity to speak about that. And, and there are two, I think there are two aspects to this question. I know that there are many people who have very heartfelt, good faith views of this topic, and, and they differ in, you know, in, in viewpoint. Very often, school boards have the. know, in, in viewpoint. Um, and very often, uh, school boards have the opportunity to develop policy that will side with one point of view or another on a particular issue, right? However, the issue of bathroom utilization, uh, by the gender to which you identify is not an issue of policy, it's an issue of law. Uh, and our solicitor could certainly expand on this, uh, when and if she's here. But by, by all accounts, Office of Civil Rights, uh, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, and a whole host of, of court cases, right? That students have the civil right to identify and, and to utilize the bathroom to which they, uh, identify with respect to their gender. Now, what does that mean for us in practice, which I think is a part of your, a very important part of your question? And we do not have students who are jumping into one bathroom or the other at random. Uh, in all cases, um, we have, our, to our counselors, our school administrators, our teachers, our staff, um, we have constructive and engaging, uh, conversations with students, with families. And we, we try to develop, uh, a supportive plan, all right, that meets the needs of the individual on a case by case basis while respecting that individual's civil rights. And again, what those outcomes look like vary from person to person and from case to case. But it is, it is a thoughtful process, a respectful process, and I believe one that is respectful not only of the students, but respectful of our school community.
Could we develop?
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, could we develop a policy prior to someone using the bathroom? Like not discriminate against anyone to use the bathroom to which they identify, but a policy that kind of outlines what would happen if a family has a child that wants to do that instead of just coming to school and saying, I want to go to this bathroom? Like I could see that getting in this day and age kind of harried.
And, and that, I think that is a better question for our solicitor, uh, because, and again, I'm not going to pretend to be the solicitor here, but I, I, something to do with the, like in special education, there are parents' rights written into the statute, whereas in some of these, maybe Title IX or whatever is the, the right emerges from the, the student. And so the idea of having a, a specific policy in place, some solicitors may want to weigh in on that in a way that's much more articulate than, than the superintendent is doing right now.
My understanding was we had some type of process, maybe if we understood it better.
Yeah, we, processes we do have.
Yeah.
But overarching policies, we do not. And I have not seen a lot of templates out there that, that address this. And from what I've heard, it is a matter of doing like on a case by case basis with respect to the students. But the overarching policy is that we must respect students' civil rights. And that's the, you know, that's the implementation of that is, is fair, is fair discussion. I'm going to defer to the solicitor in answering that question.
I had something separate. I just had a, a request, um, for a new business, just with respect to technology. I know, um, there have been some challenges recently and I know they're being addressed in the background, which I really appreciate. I know there are some, you know, more short-term fixes that were, it sounds like already implemented and things have been a lot better. Um, so what I would just ask is, um, one, you know, encourage that if we need additional, um, resources with respect to financial, if necessary, that it be brought before us, um, including the infrastructure that was mentioned. It sounds like we have some antiquated, antiquated, um, infrastructure with respect to technology, just so we have, don't keep running into this problem because obviously short-term fixes add up. I'd rather have, uh, you know, a larger fix that provides us with security in the future. Um, and in personnel, I am curious to know how things are going with, um, you know, tech tickets. Cause I, I know even if you have underlying issues with Wi-Fi, um, in the schools that are going to be addressed separately, I, I understand that we do have, um, some struggles internally with respect to keeping up with tech tickets and laptop loaners. So I just was curious, because I've seen some chatter about that too, as, as still persisting. So I'm just curious to know with respect to an update from all of you, um, how that is going and what we can do to, um, improve upon it if possible.
Sure. First, I, I will, um, certainly commit to bringing any large expenditures to the board before we make them.
Well, yeah.
That's like a good, a good move for superintendents. Uh, and so our process is, Mr. Suma, our Director of Technology, uh, currently is organizing, um, a process to access E-Rate grant funding. So the first step is for us to try to secure funding in the process. And then once, once we get that in place, an E-Rate can offset upwards of 40% of costs for this. And, and so we, uh, in, in the very near future, because this is an important issue, because our technology has to, our teachers have worked so hard and done so well incorporating technology. There's nothing worse than coming to work and not having it work.
Not just that, like I just want children to be able to, you know, it's not every kid has access to additional Wi-Fi and laptops at home, right?
That's right. That's right. So this is a, a critical issue. And so, um, we will come to the board, once we, I think the first step is this, I know the first step is this, E-Rate funding organizing. And then we're simultaneously looking at, um, a comprehensive replacement of our internet switches and a replacement and enhancement of our access points, uh, for reasons that I've, I've described to the board why we're having some deficiencies here. And, and we actually view this as a kind of an exciting thing, uh, because by upgrading our infrastructure to meet the demands of our students, I mean, that is at the core of what we are excited to do. So you'll be seeing, uh, that in due course, and as soon as possible. And, and I anticipate before very long. Now, none of that is specific, but.
No, I just wanted to like throw it back out there.
Top of our list.
On the forefront.
Top of our list, uh, because we have to do it. And then with respect to tech tickets, um, we, we did write it when we were the, kind of like with the transportation, we hit a low. Uh, we also, I think, hit a low with, uh, tech tickets. I think we're bouncing back now. We have some pending, um, changes in the department, which will require us to kind of work through. Um, we also, uh, are looking at the good work of the people who are doing this and maybe thinking about, um, maybe workflow and process to see how we might better do it, including, uh, you know, enlisting our employees to maybe be able to address some issues independently that they can reasonably address as opposed to kind of sittering it through. So we recognize that, you know, kids need their computers working and the infrastructure has to work. And, uh, we are headlong into the process of, of getting that going.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other new business? Okay. Solicitor comments? And with that, we are adjourned at 7:48.